Thank you.
Good evening, the city of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for November seventh, two thousand and twenty four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you'll be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to come to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on it, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President.
Good evening. Ms. Better Barazo.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, before we begin with all the cases, uh, we'll ask if there are any request for withdrawals or deferrals from this evening.
See a raised hand? Adam?
Adam, go ahead.
Oh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening, Adam Barnowski, two fifty-five State Street. Here in Boston, I'm an attorney for Virtual Fulfillment Center. We are seeking a deferral on BOA one five nine nine four eight five uh, to the board's November nineteenth hearing date.
Can you provide the address for Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes, it's three oh nine dash three twenty-five Old Colony Avenue.
Thank you.
Well, as I will repeat that, this will be for case BOA one five nine nine four eight five with the address of three oh nine to three twenty-five Old Colony Avenue. Um, do you have anything else you'd like to say about that?
No, that is all.
Uh, what length of, uh, deferral are you seeking?
Uh, we are seeking if, uh, if available to be heard on the November nineteenth hearing date.
Caroline?
Yes, we have seats during that time.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to appro- motion to approve deferral until November nineteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
There are no further requests for withdrawals or deferrals than
Danny's iPad?
Hi, yes, uh, this is Danny. I would care. It is, uh, five fifty Liberty Street. Uh, in Brinkham, two one eight four.
Oh, uh, you want two devices, Danny? You may want to get off one because we're hearing an echo.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Danny, are you requesting a deferral?
Correct, for actual fulfillment center.
What's, I'm sorry.
So, um, Attorney Baranski just asked for a deferral, so it will be on November nineteenth.
Okay, I'm, I was requesting a deferral until the hour like, uh, legal actions heard by the judge and we'll see like based on what the judge decides on that motion, with the filing that I filed today.
So, we're gonna be deferring it until November nineteenth?
All right.
And you can provide public testimony at that time.
Beautiful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
No other requests, we'll move on to case BOA one six four four one one eight with the address of four Cross Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand? Oh, okay, so Stephanie, is it, are you on for this case?
That's correct.
Please proceed.
I'm Stephanie Mashick, um, Mashick McLean Architects, uh, uh, the architects for the proposed, um, addition at four Cross Street. This project, um, or this building is pretty much, um, pretty much occupies the entire footprint of the, um, of the plot. Um, we're seeking to demolish a deck that sits, um, at that upper. So if we go to the page just before that. Yep, so that first plan is the basement plan. Um, the next one over is the first floor plan. There's a currently a deck in that upper um, left-hand corner of the plan. Um, it's the only piece of that first floor plan that's not shaded. Uh, that, um, occupies that corner. We're looking to, uh, make an addition of, um, an eighty-eight foot square foot footprint addition, um, at that first floor level with basement below it, um, which will leave about half of that, um, current deck space open for, um, a new deck um, at that same level. The, um, the addition on the first or the, uh, the addition is, um, maybe we could go to a two point one, which is, uh, shows the um, proposed plans. There we go. It's just a little confusing to read just because of patching showing, um, showing areas of demolition, um, et cetera. Actually, I believe this is the demolition plan, so if we could scroll. Thank you, there we are. A little clearer. So the first plan is the basement plan, um, so providing, um, essentially a, a space below that, um, that addition on the first floor. And on the first floor, the plan in the, in the center of the screen, um, the addition, uh, is, um, is a kitchen that, uh, allows for contiguous space between living, dining, and kitchen at that first floor level. The owners, um, have three small children. Currently, their kitchen sits in the back corner where that, um, that little powder room is shown and it's just difficult for them to operate smoothly as a, as a young family. Um, on the second level, just to point this out, um, we would use the roof of that, um, that kitchen addition um, for a small roof deck.
Stephanie, your only violation is FAR. Can you just, um, tell us what it, uh, what it is now and what it, what you're proposing?
The current, um, FAR is, um, two thousand two hundred and eighty-one gross square feet. The proposed is two thousand three hundred and fifty-four gross square feet.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. The sections are pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted and a butters meeting on October first, at which no comments were made. Were unaware of any additional community concerns at this time. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, any other raised hands?
Uh, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform, um, a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five six two four two six with the address of thirty Dwight Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Mark Lacass, attorney for the property owner Jake Kitzin, who is on with us as well. Um, this application involves a familiar rear deck. If we could scroll to the floor plans and elevations. There we are. That's good. Perfect. Um, at the rear of a building in the South End. Um, in the South End, an extension into a rear yard on a row house or townhouse is considered conditional, even if it otherwise satisfies all of the dimensional requirements, which is the citation that we have here. Article sixty-four dash section nine, sub paragraph four. And we are proposing, as shown in the middle there, the addition of a rear deck at the hurler level, which in the back is one story above the garden level, and this is a, uh, unit that is multiple floors owned by this owner. There is an existing overhang that was there prior to the renovation, um, involved here. Um, that has been retained. You can see that in the, in the photographs. It was a sort of a portico over that rear door. So what we're proposing in the middle screen is the, uh, new deck area, sort of on the left-hand side where the two doors are um, for access to the deck, and that is six feet from the rear of the building. Um, but that, so it looks consistent, as shown on the right-hand side. We're bringing the railing around that little jog area, so we actually pick up just a, a little bit of extra space on the existing roof of that overhang, just to make the deck look consistent and bring the railing into, you know, the alignment of the entire existing structure. But the new portion of the deck is six feet, and as shown on the right, there are cantilever brackets supporting the deck, which makes it consistent with the planning department design guidelines. And that is the extent of the proposal, um, before you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Do you have approval from the South End Landmark Commission?
It is on the rear of the building, and there's no alley down Dwight Street on this part of the property, so it's not within
This is not in their purview?
No.
Okay, great, thanks. No further questions.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, or good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones. I represent the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding thirty Dwight Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting on May eighth twenty-four, which was attended by two constituents. Additionally, the proposal has been in communication with Eight Streets Neighborhood Association, and while the applicant has not yet met with the Eight Streets Civic Association, they have expressed that while they have no issues with the proposal, there are growing concerns about a tree located on the property whose roots were cut due to a project on the abutting property and is now at risk of falling and damaging several surrounding properties due to construction. Uh, at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Laura Tulladano here from Consul of Science's office. At this time, Consul of Science would like to go on record and support due to a good community process with the neighbors. It is our understanding that the Eight Streets Neighborhood Association is also not opposed. Consul of Science respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the neighbors on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, we, oh, go ahead. Does anyone else speak? We have no additional raised hands, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lacass, do you just want to address that tree issue before we move on?
Um, the tree is not related to this particular part of the project. Um, the property next door did some construction work, the tree sort of on the property. And roots have been cut, uh, in, in connection with that project, but it's not really related to this, um, this deck at all, has, you know, it's, it's just there, so the civic group asked about it while, um, part of this project, but it's not, it doesn't impact what is before you tonight.
Got it, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you kindly.
Next, we have case BOA one six four nine two five eight with the address of forty-three Bowden Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Uh, I'm here. Uh, for the record, Lawrence Estacara, one seventy-five Federal Street in Boston. Uh, joining me is David Thomas, one of the owners of the property. Kelly Robbins, whose firm manages and will oversee construction. And most importantly, Derek Bloom, the architect who can explain the plans. This is one of those brick buildings across from the what used to be called the Sultanstow Building at a hundred Cambridge Street. And, um, uh, sometime in the sixties before the present zoning code, uh, one of the units was transformed into an office. And we're now reversing that. And we're making one additional unit and building a slight addition to a second unit using all the space. It was a multi-floor office. Um, the floor area ratio is excessive, but it always has been. The open space is insufficient. It always has been. Off-street parking is insufficient, but it always has been. But because this is a matter where they're, uh, switching from office to residential, it triggered review by this board. And, uh, we've, uh, met, uh, Siggy's on the line, uh, I think, uh, uh, we had an abutters meeting and nobody showed up to complain. We met with the zoning and licensing committee of the Beacon Hill Civic Association. Uh, no problems. Um, and we look forward to getting blessed by you folks and by the full board and fixing up this building. Derek, you want to go through the plans?
Sure, will do. Hi, Derek Bloom from Bloom Architecture. So as Larry mentioned, they were converting office space to residential. Currently, the office space occupies, um, the basement uh, in full, except for some mechanical space that's down there. Uh, the entire first floor and ha- the rear half of the second floor. Um, on, on these drawings, the street, Bowden Street's at the bottom, so the rear refers to the thinner part in the back there. Um, so we are, we're sort of, uh, adding, this is a funny view because it's a ceiling plan, but can we go back one maybe? Sure, this is good, so, um, so the apartment label two F on the far left uh, is, is the front half, and we're adding the back half of the second floor to it as well as, um, part of the back of the first floor. So two F gets bigger. It's not a new unit, it's being expanded. Um, the new unit will be on the, on the remainder of the first floor, which is the front half and the basement. So that'll be the, uh, the new residential unit. Unit count overall for the building doesn't change, um, it's just that that one commercial flips to residential. Um, in terms of apartment sizes, we've got, uh, the first floor basement unit is eight hundred and eighty-five square feet. And the result of expanding the second floor unit will be, um, one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. So we can keep going, we'll see the proposed layouts. This is still kind of in the demo. Still demo, if we can keep going, please. Uh, it seems like out of order to me. Wish I could, no, it's structural. Uh, sorry, I'm not seeing the sheet, um, I usually
That's fine.
Can we, I mean, this does this does show it, but it's a ceiling plan, so you're seeing everything dashed. But at any rate, um, in terms of the zoning, uh, data, um, the there's, there's no change to any, anything, uh, lot area width, frontage, floor area ratio, height, things like that. The only change is the usable open space per dwelling unit, because we're adding technically a dwelling unit, even though we're not adding a unit. Um, that's an existing non-conformity. The requirement is a hundred and fifty square feet per T U. We have currently twenty-two, and we are proposing to have nineteen square feet per unit. Uh, all of the other non-conformities, um, there's a couple more are not changing as a result of the project.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted and a butters meeting on September eighteenth, at which no concerns were raised. Proponent went on to present to the Beacon Hill Civic Association Zoning and Licensing Committee on October second, which returned a vote of non-opposition. Uh, with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Uh, Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one six five one five one three with the address of twenty Myrtle Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yeah, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quilty Miller and Hanley. Are here today on behalf of Heidi McKean, uh, who is the property owner, uh, and operates Houndstooth Consignors. Uh, with me tonight as well, I believe, is Doug Stefanov, who's the architect. Um, uh, Ms. McKean recently purchased, this is an existing single-story commercial building uh, and property at twenty Myrtle Street, uh, near the corner of Myrtle and Joy Street, uh, in the Beacon Hill neighborhood. Um, she's looking to open and operate her Houndstooth Consignors. Uh, this would be her second location, um, and she's got her first location in Hamilton, Mass. for about six years or so. Um, and she purchased the property, um, and after opening the store, she learned uh, kind of much to her surprise that despite operating as a commercial building uh, in retail store for various storefronts for many, many years, uh, there was an office used there previously, photography store, barber shop, et cetera, that her local retail consignment shop actually needed zoning code relief uh, in the form of a conditional use permit, uh, in order to properly operate because previous owners had never actually, uh, properly changed the use and occupancy to their stores. So it turns out, you know, when, when we did some digging at ISD, the recorded use, uh, was not retail. Um, and I think it was, uh, potential, I think it was actually a law office, um, use. Um, and so we are seeking to change the occupancy, uh, from office to retail. Um, this unfortunately required two conditional use permits. Um, one for the existing non-conforming change of use, uh, from law office to retail, and then the non-conforming use change as well. Um, no changes otherwise to the storefront, to the footprint, the building, et cetera. Um, so it's a fairly simple request for a change of occupancy, and honestly, somewhat of a cleanup uh, on aisle six of the records with ISD. So happy to pause here and ask, uh, and see if you have any questions, but again, fair, fairly straightforward occupancy change. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted and a butters meeting on September thirtieth, at which no concerns were raised. Proponent went on to present to the Beacon Hill Civic Association Zoning and Licensing Committee on October second, which returned a vote of non-opposition that comprised the community process, and with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA one six six zero six five six with the address of five ninety East Broadway. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Frank Knippenberg, on behalf of Higher Ground Fitness. Um, we are seeking to take what is currently a multi-use building with one dentist office and two residences and subdivide the dentist office. Um, the dentist office will remain, and, and in the basement space put a, uh, Pilates studio, which, uh, under article sixty-eight qualifies as a fitness studio and is a forbidden use, so. Pretty simple project, just subdividing uh, space that was already in use and just changing, uh, the use to a, a fitness studio, which is, uh, has been accepted by the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Um, the two residential units, there is no change at all, correct?
Correct, they are just two one-bedroom apartments that have been there for
So you're just really changing the use of professional office to, you said a Pilates studio?
Correct.
Okay, um, I know we received feedback, Madam Chair, regarding, um, inadequate plans, but I, I think this is sufficient for me, so I don't have any further questions.
I will agree, uh, any, uh, with that, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted and a butters meeting on September twenty-sixth, at which no concerns were raised. Uh, proponents additionally corresponded with the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which is the active civic group in this area, indicated no opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so, Madam Chair, members of the board, Laura here from Consul of Science's office. At this time, the Consular would like to go on record and support based on the feedback from neighbors. Consul of Science respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the neighbors on any quality of life issues that arise. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a
Oh, Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up question? I'm so sorry, um, i- if the, if the professional office is going to, in the description, it actually says that you're gonna remain, it's gonna remain as a professional office, and you mentioned it's gonna be subdivided with a fitness studio? Is that correct?
Correct, the, the professional office occupied the first floor in the basement space. Uh, the profession, the dentist office is gonna remain on the first floor. The Pilates studio will take over the basement space.
Uh, where the, where the professional office used to be?
Yeah, it was, uh, dental lab and storage space for
It's all, it's all dental right now.
Okay, I think the, I think the project description that was given to us is, uh, was not accurate. Um, because it's mentioned that the professional office is going to remain, but I don't have any further questions.
It is gonna, that is gonna remain on the first floor.
That's the dental office, okay, got it. With that, so, with, with that clar- clarification, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case has been deferred. So that takes us to two companion cases. First is case BOA one six four zero four five nine with the address of five to seven Denver Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one six four zero four six one also with the address of five to seven Denver Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the cases to the board?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yeah, so I would like to do the presentation about this.
Can you just identify yourself, uh, your name and address for the record?
Uh, my name is, uh, Tin Pham, the owner of, uh, five dash seven Denver Street, Dorchester. And Huitron is my contractor, but, um, he's running a little bit late, so I will do the presentation today.
Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Please proceed.
Um, so, um, the first one is about the remodel, the kitchen, and, uh, soon remove the kitchen in a Soon remove the kitchen in a better location. As you know, the old houses, they have different um, uh, organization right now, we are. Um, we, uh, so we propose uh, to um, to reorganize the kitchen in a more uh, functionable way. And then we have the existing two-deck. So we would like to add one more deck on the top of the third floor. But of course, it's still, uh, remain as the two family. And we all live together as a family, so that is uh, one. Um, one case, and the other case, it would, we would like to apply for the curb cut and propose uh, two new parking space. So I know that we take out one parking spot from the uh, public, from the street, but then we are all family. So we, we, we can park at least two car in there, and we can. Uh, arrange among ourselves, at least two, maybe three cars, so to leave the parking on the street for public. Uh, we are family-owned, we are not rental, so we really hope that, and you know, on the same street, on Shepton Street, there are a lot of. Single family, they only have one car, but they still have, all of them have the curb cut. And they can only fit one car in there, so I really hope that I can have the curb cuts for the. Parking, so we can put more car, our family there and leave more spot in, on the street. For the public to park, because that area is very thickly uh, settled, a lot of, a very busy. Uh, area, lots of car over there, so we don't want any burden for the street anymore, but that's why we propose that. Uh, thank you very much. If you have any questions, you can ask me.
Thank you, um, can you just uh clarify on Denver Street? Is there, do you have a curb cut?
Uh, on Shepton Street.
Sh- so you're requesting one on Shepton, is there anything existing on Den?
No, nothing existing.
Okay.
No, it's too small, yeah.
Okay, questions from the board?
Um, uh, there's um, request for two.
Sorry, sorry.
There's a request for two parking spaces, um, but it, it really kind of eats up all your open space. Uh, you don't really have open space on the property. Would you be open to having a curb cut for one parking space and allow for some open space in the rear?
Yes, actually, I'm only propose one spot. And uh, as you can see, we park two car, but one after another. So, we, we only request for one, yes. We know we shouldn't take too much from the street, it's very hard to park there, it's snow here, so we only try to pose one.
Okay, um, okay, so I don't have any further questions, uh, if you are agreeable to. Provide open space and to have one parking space only.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have public testimony?
Good morning, or good evening, sorry guys, I'm getting the, I'm wrong. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding fact of seven Denver Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on September fourth of this year, which was attended by three constituents. The primary feedback was this meet, for this meeting was that the community supported the applicant's project to renovate their home. For her and her family, but definitely did not support the curb cut or the stacked parking layout siding. Removal parking spaces on the street for the community, concerns about the stacked layout if the, uh, of the parking, if the applicant ever sells a property. And those spots have to be shared by renters, and lastly, due to the proximity of the driveway to other homes. Constituents are also concerned about idling car fumes entering through an open window. Uh, the proposal was reviewed by the Saint Mark's Area Civic Association, which expressed many of the similar concerns shared by constituents. They support the home renovation, but not the curb cut, and especially not the parking layout on the driveway. Uh, at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Yeah, ma'am, sure, we have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, thank you, and just, uh, I don't know if someone wants to read Bob D'Amico's. Uh, comments for the record. From B T D, if you have them.
Give me one moment, ma'am.
If, if not, it's okay. I don't know, do you have it, Caroline?
You say that it did comply with B T D's criteria?
Okay, that's fine. Uh, any other questions?
Bottom, bottom line, yes.
Got it, okay, uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, to satisfy Boston Planning's department concern regarding open space, I'd like to perform a motion. Uh, that does a compromise for both the applicant and Boston Planning's um, review of the project. Uh, the motion is to prove, to have a motion of approval with a proviso that it be for only one parking space. To allow for open space for hot, at the rear of the parking space.
Is there a second? Mister Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, uh, and sorry, was that on both, uh? Uh, was that motion for both, um, Ms. Bede Barazza, both cases?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure if Norm, Mister Stenbridge read the other project, the other case for the record.
Yes.
He did, okay, so.
So applicable to both, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me, so it, does it mean it is approved?
Yes, it's approved with for only one.
Tentatively approved, we just need to officially, uh, take it to the full board, uh, the next full board meeting, which is later this month.
Okay, so I have to wait, um, I have to join another full board meeting end of the month?
Uh, you don't have to join it, it will, it'll be read as part of our recommendations, so unless you just wanna join it.
Yes, okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And finally, we have case B O A, one, six, four, nine, one, zero, three. With the address of two Michael Road. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Sorry, if you're on for this proposal, can you raise your hand? Okay, I'm sorry, I see a raised hand here, um, Leah, I just sent the request to unmute you.
Yes, there we go, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, excellent, uh, so my name is Leah Overby, I am here with my husband, Michael Tellman, we live at two Michael Road. And our proposal for this property is to essentially correct a uh, difficult entrance. So the way, we bought the house recently, and the way the house is designed, the front door, which takes up the three, the normal regular three feet. It opens pretty much exactly into the stairs. And so because of that, it's extremely difficult to maneuver around the front of the house. And I'm particularly concerned if we had anybody that had any kind of accessibility issues, it would be pretty much impossible for them to get into our front door. And so what we would like to do is essentially bump out that front door by about four feet. To improve the ability to access the front of the house. Uh, so on the presentation that we have, we show exactly what we want to do, we increase the floor plan by, um. There we go, there we go, like that, there we go, uh, by forty-eight feet total, it is four feet in uh, depth. And twelve feet across the front of the house, which will also improve access around that hallway there, that's a little bit on the difficult side right now. The reason that we need your approval for this, this is an older house, and already we are too close to the front of the street within the twenty-foot uh, abutment rule. And so this would eat up slightly more of the front yard, uh, by the six feet, kind of. The house also has an overhang, so we're actually only extending the footprint of the house by two feet outside. Because of the already existing overhang that hangs over by two feet already. Um, this is an older community, the setbacks along the street are not standard. And so in a way, by pushing it out by this additional four feet, we're actually kind of bringing the house closer to what our neighbors are already. Um, so that's in essence what we would like to do.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on September twenty-sixth, at which no concerns were raised. Proponent additionally presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which is the active civic group in this area on October tenth. Which then voted to support the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Uh, I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Miss, but, uh, Mister Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
And good night, everyone.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.